And we're good.
Okay, um, today is May the 10th, 2022, and this is Beverly Hills Unified School District's special study session to review in more detail our audit report from Mossad. So Steve, what I think we should start with is just looking at when we look at audit results from our last audit report. If we could just go and have a little more discussion about observation for Steve. And it talks about the having the backup for the payoffs.
Yep.
So can you explain that a little better?
Right, so the this for the specific finding here is you want to make sure that the costs are compliant, not excessive when they're billed to the district. The current, if you go to the district now, the current payment application substantiations do not include all the backup for the billings. Team Concept says it's in the trailer that you can validate that they're tying everything out, but they're not submitting it to the district. So we're looking for district to have access to that to validate that the monthly substantiations are compliant, not excessive. And it's really for the cash, one, to confirm costs are compliant. And then two, that if there's not a cash flow impact, that you guys could be not overpaying in terms of the timing difference and you guys collecting interest on those payments. The second piece is the lien releases where it is a best practice to collect both conditional and unconditions from the subcontracts. And you guys currently get the that information at the contractor level. But having that information submitted to the district, I think, provides benefits where if someone's not getting paid, they're going to note accordingly on those lien releases that they're either not getting paid or they're getting paid in full. So the the story that I told before, which I mean, I was doing a construction on and lived through it, was the contractor was not saying this is happening, but this is the risk, right? That the contractor wasn't paying their subs, the subs were were not timely, the the contractor was kind of doing a good job of keeping the subs, not notifying the owner, right, of those payments not being made. And the contractor was upside down, so they were using that those funds to kind of fund their business. So in that situation, that contractor was terminated because they were completely upside down. But the lien releases, if you get those submitted, the contractors collected every month, almost every contractor that I've ever met does that. And you get that assurance that that people are getting paid timely, there's no exceptions. And if there are potential like issues and people aren't getting paid, you can kind of investigate those accordingly. So it's a it's a really good tool for owners from our experience.
It's a risk management.
Right.
It's about the payoffs, though, in terms of not having the backup. When the when the contractor bills, wait, you can answer this better than. If I'm understanding this correctly, it's saying it says like at the end of the first paragraph, it says the job cost accounting should be updated to include actual costs incurred. So when they issue a payout to get paid, is it based on the actual cost of the work that they've done? Or is it based on percentage of the work? Is it a scheduled value? Because if the contract says it's supposed to be the cost.
I think it's a little bit of both. I think there's a little bit of both going on there. I don't know. Steve, if you want to jump in. Because I think it all came to fruition. And as we were closing out B1B2, and we realized that we had advanced paid, if you will, a little bit before the actual work was done. Steve, you want to jump in about that issue?
Yeah, I mean, when we were doing our draft report for the construction audit, there was a overbilling to the district, which was trued up at the end. But that that was an issue that they were billing based off percent complete versus actual cost. So whatever the yeah, I mean, there's there's a couple of risks with that, but yeah, that 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 is what was occurring.
The original finding that you say on B1B2 is that that we were ahead $6,746,000 in payments originally.
Yeah, yeah, let me, I don't have that report in front of me.
Switching over to the B1B2 audit. So that's an example where we were ahead in payments over six months. Almost $7 million. And so, and this is a finding that we get year over year. And so this is something we should address. And how do we do this? How do we try and correct this going forward?
I mean, one of the things we were talking about is one of the takeaways from the audits could be as we negotiate the contract with a new bond management firm, we incorporate these things, best practices that we've learned through the audit.
Right.
So I think that's kind of, at this point, there's not much we can do with the current contract, but in the future contract.
But if it says in the contract that the job cost count shall be updated to include actual costs, isn't that saying that when they bill it to be based on?
Well, we should just make that really clear in the next contract we write.
Right, but even now, as we get payoffs going forward in this contract, that we make certain that we're getting costs, not percent estimates. So then we're not ahead, that we're actually paying for real costs.
To work that stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the that's the that's the historic push and pull with the lease leaseback agreement. Because in a lease leaseback agreement, you guys all know this, because we say that a building is going to cost $80 million. And then there's a schedule of payments that we make to the contractor of X amount every month. So 1.8 million, 1.8 million, because that delivery method is supposed to do a couple of things. One of the things it's supposed to do is simplify cash flow for the owner. So the so that I know every month I have to come up with 1.8 million dollars. Regardless of in that month, they did $600,000 worth of work, or if they did $2 million worth of work, I'm only going to pay them 1.8 million dollars. That's the benefit of lease leaseback. So you, I don't know if you can have your cake and eat it too. I'm not sure if you can say on a particular payout, I'm only going to pay $2 million if you negotiated a lease leaseback where you said you're going to pay 2.2 every month. So that's the push and pull between lease leaseback and a designed bid deal. So that's where you have your conflict. Now, at this point, I mean, it's a discussion to have with the new construction manager, honestly, about that and how that's managed.
We will be operating on a lease leaseback.
We're still operating in our lease leaseback.
Right.
Well, we won't, we won't be for any future projects.
So we will even have projects.
No, I understand that right now.
Yeah, for these existing ones, yes.
For the next three years.
But he'll tell you, I mean, Mr. Blake will tell you, it's a lease leaseback with his own modifications.
Is that the modification? Because my understanding was lease leaseback, you have a lease payment and then you have your payout.
Well, you have, it's supposed to all kind of be the same. Your lease pay, your lease payment is actually one payday a month. Because that's all you pay, because yours is really not a lease. You're not really leasing anything. It's a fiction.
Eli's outside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know he was outside. Yeah, I I just saw him kind of walking back and forth.
Oh, yeah. So, but he's Eli, you can be in here, enjoy all the fun. Yeah, it's not, it's not closed session anymore. I'm sorry, Eli.
And then I'll just know, just my, I'm a performance auditor and a construction auditor, so when you have GMP contracts with cost of work definitions, there's a lot of enhancements you guys can make to the cost of work definitions to help control cost.
So what recommendations would you suggest for controlling that so that we don't get?
So the the different types of, I mean, this could be a whole TED Talk session with the construction auditor. I do, I do a lot of articles and a lot of webinars in the space, so I think each cost element has risk associated with it, and there's good ways to control it and manage it. So I'll just go through, I don't know, a couple, and I think I got horror stories for every single cost type. So for like labor, you need to make the decision if it's actual costs or rates. If it's actual cost, you got to find what is a allowable burden or not, potentially cap it. For rates, you got to confirm what's in the rate. Make sure it's reasonable and then make sure it's market competitive. Contract equipment. There's two components. You have third party, then you have contractor and equipment. I think upfront, you got to know what type of equipment are hitting the job, if it's cheaper to buy it or sell it, whether you guys want the assets. If it's contractor and equipment, I think to define what's an allowable type of equipment, what's not, what's a fair market value rate for those each pieces of equipment, daily, weekly, monthly, setting fair market value replacement, so you don't exceed that, so that you're not paying more profit than you need to. For subcontractors, you want to have good competitive processes around vendor selection with owner approval requirements. Potentially having audit rights at the sublevel, depending the size of the contract. You could have caps on self perform work, if there's any, I don't think Pro West is doing that, but for future contracts, if someone's doing self perform contracts, making sure it's competitively bid, not to exceed limits, right to audit clause for general conditions for project management, having the staffing kind of plan that we discussed at the performance audit, same concept at the GC level so that they can live within their budget, you're not trying to take profit from them, but just making sure that it's it's staff efficiently for the project. Lodging auto per GM, having those have owner approval requirements for different types of vendor or different types of employees with not to exceed caps. So that's just kind of a a couple going going. But yeah, it's a big topic. I mean, we our team does 50 to 75, so we see a lot of horror stories. But I think there's a lot of built in controls you can do in contracts that are guarantee maximum price with cost to work definitions.
I mean, I guess what you're touching on is many of the things that were identified in the B1B2 audit. So maybe we should just go straight to that and talk specifically about our audit for B1B2 and those findings. Because I don't think it kind of
December 3rd one now.
Yeah, because I think it captures many of these things we're talking about that I don't think we were aware of. So if you could just go over the detailed observations and recommendations.
You try.
I think it's page five. Sorry, page five.
Got it. So we're just going through the B1B2 report.
Starting with page five.
And this is the December 3rd, 2021. Okay. So the first one, are you guys seeing the overbilling of 2.9?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's just kind of that month. This doesn't consider the kind of the least information Wade was addressing, but for guarantee maximum price contracts, there's cost to work definitions that define allowable, not allowable costs. So having good billing controls that you're not overpaying or pre prepay more than you should is a benefit to the owner. You guys earn interest on it, so I think that's kind of the the play here. There's there's other bond programs that we've seen that they don't earn interest on it. So they may do some of those prebillings as a benefit to the contractor because there's no benefit to the owner. But here there is an interest component that I think needs to be considered.
So how, sorry, just one question. So when you think about horror stories, is that you identify in the performance audit with, you know, not having the appropriate backup and their estimates and whatnot, and then you see this where we were overbilled at least at one point by the 6.7 million a net various, you know, overbilling of that 2.9. Does this qualify as one of the horror stories? Like, how, I I know you write the impact is high, but how alarming is this to you as the auditor?
Um, it's, I've seen worse. I I think it's a little bit on the higher range, to be honest. But I I don't have kind of the analysis that Wade was saying on the lease payment. If that dictated like timing difference that they agreed to a lease payment of X and then that dictated the billing, I don't have that information considered within this report.
You don't have it, so.
But when you're doing the audit, aren't you looking at the agreements that we have in place?
This is just based off the GMP contract.
Isn't that where that would be?
Be in that master, that master agreement.
Right. Isn't that what they base this on?
They base the
It's in the master.
They did base it on that.
Yeah, it's in the master contract.
So so this overbilling is what they build compared to system of record cost from Pro West? That's this analysis.
Wait, in the contractor response to this finding, it says that it was reduced by quarters end and further reduced by September 30th. What did it wind up being? Was it completely eradicated?
So yeah, so that project, you had those savings overall, the project.
So went the other direction.
In the end, it was a cash flow issue. They just had to cash.
In advance.
In advance.
They had, they had $7 million.
That's where we wound up.
And the and what Steve is saying, that Steve, you're saying that that the issue with that is that we earn interest on that money.
Right.
So it should be, it should be saved. Oh, I understand that, but it takes it out of our our confidence earning interest, so it should be, we should maintain as much of that as possible that we don't have to pay.
That's the issue. We lost interest on that $7 million.
Okay, so we need to
Not prematurely.
Well, but that you have, if you continually leaseback, you will do that. We just have to in future figure out how we can reduce that.
But I mean, I think there has to be some sort of checks and balances when the payments are coming in against with that actual costs versus where our payments are and then make an adjustment at that time so that you can not get ahead.
Yeah.
Especially on that scale, when you're talking about multiple billions of dollars, that's a lot of interest.
I mean, if you're ahead, you know, a couple hundred thousand, that's a good story. But but we we probably as a board, you kind of, I wonder if we can do this way, it's it's kind of capped. Like we can't, we don't want to ever be more than this much ahead because what's it costing us in interest, right?
I mean.
We probably just have to do some kind of analysis every six months, every four months, every six months to see where we were.
How much of this is caused by the lease leaseback?
How much of this? They can't just do it as an ongoing tally when they
You can't, so I mean, this this coming from a construction auditor, so like, I'll tell you what we do for like a best practice and it's whatever people's kind of risk management tolerance is. So for big projects, when we're engaged monthly to do monthly pay apps, generally that's monthly, when we get engaged, it's like over 250, 250 million. So we'll have a doc request list like we do for construction audits that we start with the contractor early on, like early on in terms of expectations of billing, where we'll say, okay, we want your system, understand their system of record, understand the reporting that's automatically generated from their system of record. We'll collect their labor distribution reports, their job cost detail, their subcontractor status reports, and understand kind of like what the controls in their system are so that we can kind of understand and rely on that data. We'll also collect the substantiation documents. So that could be all the invoices, etc. That's kind of over the top, I think, on maybe some of the smaller projects. Like you, you may not need that level, but maybe doing an initial audit to get the expectations, understand the reporting from the system and just having automated reports, for example, saying, okay, these are the, these are the reports we're comfortable that kind of substantiate the cost, cost of work for the GMP. If you run these reports, we'll do some spot checks, for example, make sure we're still comfortable with it. Out of three reports, there's your, there's your billing plus fee, you know. So that's got you, you can either do all, which I think makes sense for bigger projects because you want kind of that kind of oversight and kind of control around it. But if for the smaller ones, I think if you kind of do that initial work with billing expectations, understand the reports, keep comfort level, and you could do the gaps like what was recommended, but I think having those reports generated from the system of record is not a bad, it's a, it's a pretty efficient way to control cost.
So wouldn't we at this point, colleagues want to look at Elrude O B3B4, see if we're running into the same problem? And then try to put a cap on that, whether if we need to negotiate it or.
You know, both your projects are just around just under 50%, so it's probably a good time to do an intro, an interim audit, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to, I don't want, we should, if this was a, this is a large hiccup, so I think we need to address it. You know, some things resolve themselves. This one isn't going to resolve themselves because we're talking about payments for a West.
And it it makes some sense to do it now as we transition your management structure, do it now.
Yeah, it does make sense.
So I would be in favor of.
And then we can stay on it. I mean, I don't see why they can't just include the the backup to just.
Well, the backup is, the backup is, the backup's available. I mean, I know exactly where all the backup is. I can go pull it. It's just, it's just, you know, it's just a whole, it's there. It's just a matter of.
So you could always go at any point, you know, where it is. But it's the audit part, I think, to.
So do you guys agree, should we give direction to get audit proposals for P3B4 and Elrude O? Just so we can get on top of this.
Would it be something like the one we have right here and because of the one, so that, yeah, I would be.
Yeah, because I think we can limit the scope of the audit.
Right, but I'm saying that, well, here we are in the middle of this one.
Well, let's just go into this.
We have to learn.
And then that's from that door side.
Okay.
Right, because there's other things in there, so.
I mean, like, we should do that, but we should also, whoever the new CM is, we should make sure that we have new kind of control.
So let's go to the second one, shall we?
You know, I'll just end on the final point. When you have the good cost of work definitions for GMP contracts or you negotiate it based off your current status and you kind of push for certain items, like the organization I was talking about today, they're rolling out a bunch of construction, you just get your template for the cost of work definitions AI form, and that's what you use for all your projects. So we do the contract consultation or we we offer that service and we make sure that's like lined up with the National Association of Construction Auditing Standards. And you may not get all of them because you're kind of mid project, but I think you can kind of support a successful negotiation, getting closer to those things with with those kind of controls considerations. Okay, number two.
Yes.
Okay, so when we get, when we do these audits, we like seeing contract times formalized with kind of general condition budget amounts. Subcontractor buyout savings, for example, kind of included within those considerations, like if the estimate per sub was high and they're under, then you can potentially either move it to owner contingency, contingency or realize that reduction via change order. So I think that's in a perfect world, but here I think all contracts should have formalized contract timelines so that you can make sure that GCs are good. General conditions, for example, the project management labor is good, etc. So it's a good, a good control to have.
Are you not seeing that at all in our contract in our program?
For this one, I didn't see it in the contract documents. They were getting amended piecemeal as project was starting, and I think B1B2, in fairness, was pretty complicated, so I think maybe some of the schedule was difficult to quantify. But I think that that was an early flag on our side saying there are many budgets into the contract, but we're not seeing that kind of total GMP, total schedule, total GCs. That's to track performance, and that's, I think that that's the goal, is that you have it all defined so you can track performance.
At least in the case of this particular structure, Steve, we we've asked this a lot of times with the the different PGMP contracts that come in front of us, and then we're we're told consistently that the completion date will be on the last PGMP. You know, that's, that's what we've been informed with the projects. Are you saying that with the first PGMP for any particular project, like let's say there's going to be three or four of them, the first one should outline a time schedule? Even if the last one changes?
Yeah, I I think it should. I I think I think that'd be best practice that you formalize that schedule with the general conditions budget. And then if something changes, you do an amendment to the contract that kind of extends the schedule. I think B1B2, because we did that job site walkthrough, I can understand that there, you never know what's behind the walls, which I think that unknown, maybe a little bit scary place for contractors. The place you got to kind of weigh all the options, but I mean, out of the 75, 50 to 75 construction audits we do per year, like 98% of them have contract kind of timeline specified, and we deal with some pretty complicated projects.
I think in the future, moving forward, since all our projects are ground up now, we can get a more solidified timeframe in the initial contracts, even if we wind up with two contracts per project, let's say, we still on a ground up, it's going to be a lot easier for contractors to to schedule that out.
Going forward from.
Whatever projects we do are not going to be remodels, they're going to be new projects, whether it's building C or retaining walls or the south side, site work, it's all new. So they'll be able to give us a timeframe, whereas when before, like Steve was saying, when you're opening up 100 year old walls, you can't, you just can't do it because you don't know what you're going to discover, and you don't know what DSA is going to change.
You don't, you don't have an ugly wall.
Wait, where does the funding, where does the dollars go if the subcontractor comes in under their their costs? Where does that savings get placed?
It's part of the project. You just, just go anywhere, it just stays in the box, back to the bottom.
Goes back to the bottom. Well, it stays part of the, it stays part of the guaranteed max price, doesn't go back into the bond.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, again, it's just expense, it's just a lower expense.
Right.
So then the lower expense and.
It becomes contingency that we split 50/50.
Right.
Is there a way that we can include these types of timelines into the contracts now?
See, I don't know, that's a legal question. You already have your guaranteed max price for B3B4. You'd have to renegotiate with Pro West.
Right.
Don't we, don't we have a completion date for those?
But you don't have guidelines with general conditions and budgets.
They're pretty select, so we don't have.
It's just an open check.
Construction.
All right, can we go to three, please?
Okay, number three. And these are controls, there's no cost found. That best, best practice, we like seeing to define, and these labor types are normal, like these aren't labor types you wouldn't expect to see, but within GMP estimates or staffing plans, we like seeing who's going to be on the job, who's not, if someone's added, you get the owner approval with the budget increase amount kind of specified. So we're just calling out that the these lists, these people were not within the GMP estimate. And I think we're like those contracts in the future, having that allowed allowable personnel type, and then those owner approval requirements, saying if you're swapping a PM for a PM, that's fine, but if you're adding people, let's get the approval requirement within that.
Or if you're changing rates.
Or if you're changing your rates, correct. Okay, number four, owner approval for bonus cost. So those are the bonus amounts billed. We didn't see the owner approval requirement. It was within the estimate.
It wasn't.
It was, it was within the estimate, no owner approval specifically on those bonus amounts and people. So I think when we, when we do contract consultations, for example, we like having the owner approval specification within by person, the bonus amounts, etc.
So there's bonuses at the project management decisions? Are that just all these ones that are following?
Yeah, those are the ones that we identified within the population.
So did, so did the bond manager just make that decision unilaterally without consulting us, or were we consulted?
I think they would say it was within the estimate, the original estimate. The bonus was with a line item within the estimate. That rolled up.
So when you see the estimates, do you see the, is that in the line items?
I think, yes, the estimates were a Excel document that were substantiating the GMP. I don't think it's broken, I don't have it in front of me, this is, I didn't fully prepare for the going over the construction audits, I'm going a little bit off memory. I don't think it's broken out on the schedule values, like, so the GMP that submitted to the district, I don't think bonus is broken out on that. I think you got to go to the trailer to figure out what. Bonus is broken out on that. I think you gotta go to the trailer to figure out what rolls up to the GMP. To understand what those types of costs are.
Question, did you, there was ten on here. Were were the same number on the uh, were the numbers the same or were there more people that got bonuses? Uh, in the as in the audit? From the originals or?
So they were under. The how we structured this, the bonus was seventy eight thousand, the total. Budget for it in the GMP estimate was two seventy, so they were under billed on bonus by hundred ninety.
And you're and you're just saying that the board should know. Specifically that seventy seven seventy eight thousand instead of just being given that two seventy.
Right, so if if you were to say like in a perfect world. I would say if there are bonuses, the contract would say. Bonuses are not allowable unless approved by owner. And if there are bonuses provided to general contractor personnel, that there's some sort of policy. To approve bonuses for those personnel.
In this case.
Yeah.
In this case, it happened to work out to our favor because it was less than the. Right, the.
The budget, but yeah.
That wouldn't always be the case, so we should absolutely have. Okay.
Right, but I don't think.
Wasn't in, no, exactly. It wasn't in what was presented to us. Like you said, it's in the trailer. We'd have to go looking for it. We shouldn't have to go look for it. So in the future, that should be in the proposals that come to the board in the first place.
Well, I mean, I think there's a lot of line items that are there. I think it's um. Yeah, it it feels like there's a lot of loose areas. In terms of cash getting paid out, it's not defined and then it's getting defined after and then justified.
What?
And I think it's to be more transparent and to have better controls that they these things should be um. Identified upfront, if it's how many positions you're having, what are the terms or what's the um. Agreement for what those positions are and and how you change those positions if you're. You know, at different cases, you may have more of a certain position, but what are the controls around adding? Positions, if there's no controls around anything, then it just seems like you can. A bunch of numbers and.
Right.
Just if I everything later, so. Yeah. You're on mute, Steve.
Number five, s- same concept and flow, but for car allowances.
Is this normal? In your contracts that you see?
So I do enough of these where nothing, my range is kind of skewed, right? So that's why I kind of like good. Cost to work definitions that control it with the owner approval requirements. I mean, we do. I think your your location in um. Uh we'll we'll do jobs that are like kind of remote or very heavily populated and difficult to get to. So I I think um we do see more of these types of charges like car allowances and lodging for those type of considerations.
Was this in the original contract that they had come?
Was this a line item in the contract?
So I I I didn't, I didn't know we were going to go over this in detail. I don't have the contractor from me. I don't think so, and I don't think it was in the schedule values. I'm going off memory.
But remember, though, just so we all are talking about the same thing, this is Pro West.
Right.
Not TCDS, this is Pro West.
Right.
And their decision to allocate these dollars for car allowances and for.
Like they have their guaranteed max price.
Right.
Once they have that number, what they do with that numbers. That I think the question is, is you move forward, it's when someone does their guaranteed max prices. To be, yeah, you can say, you can put, you're not going to have car allowances. And if there's going to be bonuses that you want to have more approval for that. Um, because the money that's that is savings from your guaranteed max price, you're going to be getting back. And that can be negotiated. It doesn't have to be fifty fifty, it could be seventy thirty. So it's money that you're paying. So you, when you're, when you're doing that, you can put in parameters and understand like. Your staffing, your rates, bonuses, travel. You know, so I think this is eye opening things to to consider as.
Well, I also think it's a point well taken that, you know, you were saying that you've done audits of very remote places, right? I mean, there's. You know, places in Arizona or New Mexico where it takes a tremendous amount of mileage to pick up a supplier. We are in a major metropolitan area of the United States. So it is shocking that this type of.
Construction is all around us.
Right, I mean, a lot of labor.
Yeah, the team members.
There's construction uh resources, branches all over. That's just, you know, we're not in the middle of Minnesota or or New Mexico where I'm from.
Hold that, hold that thought.
I I said New Mexico too. Very rural.
Okay, um, number six, same concept. For computer software. So no, in theory, this is normally how we play it. Um. Software normally direct costs are allowed or allowable for the project. So for computers, you kind of go into the philosophical debate, is it a direct cost or is it indirect? If it's indirect, it should be fee. So what generally we see people do is if they bought the software for the project or to use a license for the project. Then there's a good justification for that being a direct cost. If it's something that they would have regardless of your project, then I think by definition it'd be an indirect cost, therefore included with a fee. So they're under budget. But I think those are areas where you could tighten up with the owner approval requirements and having the direct cost substantiation. To just confirm like if it's adding additional users or having computers specific for the job site. Fine, if not, uh maybe not.
What the, we pay for pro core through um TCDS, so how is this different?
I don't know. I don't know if it is different. I don't, I don't think it may be the same. Uh, I don't think uh. Pro West. Was using that software when they came on board. So I think they built this from the ground up, so. Um, from my understanding, Steve, and I think we've talked about it, this is district owned software. We own the license. Uh, so.
Okay, number seven, team meetings, food. And thi- this is, I mean, just from my experience, normally safety meetings, people are uh. Fine, working lunches. If you go to the contractor responses, that's what they're saying. So I I see the range on this for sure. So so my joke for that one, um, if you guys were invited to those lunch, those food events, it's okay. If you guys weren't invited. Then you shouldn't pay it, but that's. Just the construction auditor joke.
Well, I think that implies approval.
Is it, well, are these, is this TCDS or Pro West for the team?
The the this all reports on Pro West. There's no team concepts consideration within this report.
I mean, it's a minimal.
It's a pro West construction.
That's all the whole thing with.
Yeah, all their buildings.
Well, the next one is unbelievable.
Number eight, lodging.
Somebody told me we pay for lodging.
No, they live in Mexico. They travel back and forth. They have a, they go on, what is this? What is lodging?
Paying for lodging.
For what?
Uh, over what period of time is this again? Steven, sorry, over what period of time is this audit? It's for the whole project.
It's for the whole project.
That's what, two years, two and a half years. What if he won't be to start?
Twenty eighteen.
Yeah, April twenty eighteen, and then this report was through.
Who did, who know never went, November.
I didn't know, but I'd like to go back to, I was trying to find the original contract.
I read the original.
You know, there's little things like meals and car allowance. It's those are, those are minimal impacts when you're in packs. Lodging is a big. So that that needs to be uh.
The perception of all this is.
Well, the other question is this, is this, is this a common? Is lodging common for these kind of projects? Because. A lot of these companies that do public works are not based, let's say, in LA, so their executives are all travel, right? So the that that will be a question I would ask. Lodging could be common, but not this much.
That's what I'm talking about.
We're not going, one day they're not going back and forth like over state lines.
No, no, no. No, but if they have to come down here, they're in Baker Street.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
If they come down here and they spend the night and be here for a few days.
One guy paying a hundred twenty five thousand dollars.
Where are they staying? Also, they're staying at the uh.
Those.
Hotel six.
They're really, those are, is it under general conditions or?
Go back to like the.
You know, they're already into doing B three, three, four and Calendale. The question is, where are they in this right now?
That's why we're gonna order the audit.
I know, but I'm just saying it scares.
But that's why we want, that's why we gotta put some controls on this.
Okay, number nine, hiring cost.
I mean, sorry to go back because even if we, if there was going to be this kind of lodging, to understand how much it was going to be, so we could go negotiate, maybe even corporate rates or something. If we have, it's that we have no idea how this is being built, right? Like.
Right.
I I mean, at this rate, they're not even incentivized to. Yeah, I I mean, well, finish, but also just to be Google in any way with respect to how they're. There there's no control.
I'm not sure how relevant this would be, but they're in Wildomar rather than Baker Street.
Sorry, thank you.
Which is closer. It's only about an hour away.
No, it's by Murray, yeah.
I know, but the from Google.
What car are you driving?
I know, to.
My brother lived in Murray. I never, I never got there in less than nine.
Why are you paying? Is that where someone the guys is?
Yeah, about ninety hours. Yeah.
True.
Two hours.
Right, and it's when the price they're paying for lodging, we could get a house and rent the whole crew a house.
That's what I'm saying. If we knew that it was going to be that much, we could negotiate with the rent places.
Or you could.
Just renovate this range here.
Okay.
Okay, number nine, hiring cost. So I think that's a good area to consider on a go forward basis. Generally, they'll get the benefit of the hiring costs for longer than the project duration.
Will you explain that a little further on how that's applying to our project?
Which are one time it's paid upfront.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a.
No, I mean, if you have to hire a recruiter, a third party recruiter, you can't use the kind of talent that you need.
When the district, when the district hired search firms for.
Right.
But these people then end up being the employee that goes forward.
I believe one of the employees was a guy that died of COVID if I.
Yeah, yeah, he was a.
Project manager.
Superintendent of the project. Yeah, so they had to replace him.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I. I can't, I can't.
I just.
I can't condemn that one.
I I don't think it's about condemning. I think it's about transparency.
The lodging I could condemn.
Well, I just questioned the differences that they had between the two. One was twenty two and one was two thousand.
It wasn't in the number that.
That's quite a disparity.
That I've seen.
Right, and I'm saying.
I'm not complaining about it. Want to get somebody.
You have an open checkbook to spend it as you please, and so I think you have to be aware of that.
I and I appreciate this. Uh, we're getting a lot out of this. We'll have tighter controls and we need to find out. That's why I think we should do this audit immediately. And find out how we, if we have to put these controls in, that they have to be negotiated into the current contracts or make sure they're in future contracts. I I would prefer to see if we can negotiate these in the current contracts as an amendment.
Yeah.
I really would. I think there's enough, there's at least with the lodging thing, you know, it's.
Especially considering that we're out of funds.
Yes, exactly. And with the auto, with the auto and telephone, whatever those are, that's that's minor in the in the grand scheme of things, but lodging is not. That's that's a lot of money.
And if my overriding concern is the transparency.
Will, will we see repercussions down the line, like increases in automotive costs if we do decrease lodging? Because there would be more. Travel. I I don't imagine it would be any more expensive than.
It's not about decreasing lodging, but we should have a not to exceed on lodging or something. Shouldn't, shouldn't just, because it looks like.
Or being asked about.
Yeah.
No controls.
But maybe the closer places are more expensive. That is probably true. The closer you are to this area or to the heart of LA, the more expensive.
Right, but then they, but then they have a budget, you know, so you're offsetting. Right, you're offsetting the lodging, but you're not paying. It looks like we're paying completely and we're doing a pretty high end.
Yeah.
So.
And there are places around here where you can negotiate. There's places that are not that far away where you. You can negotiate fees for, you know, that these people are going to be using.
So I I I think with hiring fees, I I don't think. We have to allow some allowance for that, but there should, once again, I think there should be a not to exceed on hiring.
All, all of those things need some.
Yeah.
The problem is also how far. You know, after the fact, we're looking at supply that we're all aligning on. Now, in terms of. Also, just want to call out, this report is dated December third. We're sitting here on May tenth, looking at this report five months later.
Well, I would, I was looking for today.
And only because you asked for it, right? Like this didn't come in front of the board, and I don't know why it didn't.
It did, but not, not in.
It was presented, yeah. Yeah.
How did it?
I know, because all we heard about was.
What was the format in which you came to the board? Like, was it in our board on materials and I just missed it? Like, like this wasn't an attachment to a board meeting like.
I couldn't find it in.
I couldn't find it. All around here.
Yeah, no, it was attached.
Yeah, I, because I've seen this in the past. I'll look it up, but we gotta get over the.
We'd like to know because this just went straight over our heads. That's one thing that's important. We've got to take.
Sorry, Steve.
Let's finish ours. I have one more and then.
And then the last one's the uh owner asset law. So if you guys, the theory is if you purchase something. And has a useful life at the end of the project, you can either acquire it or negotiate a credit.
Can you give me an example of that? I don't know, like what kind of an asset?
My my favorite one is a, I've seen a golf cart purchased by a hospital and they were really excited to absorb a golf cart. That was probably the best um. Best construction audit recommend or finding I could do if someone realized they were getting a golf cart at the end of the project. I think more realistically, computers. TVs um. Potentially some equipment, you know, like if 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 you do that kind of analysis, and I I don't think Pro West is doing this, but I think maybe other ones may. If they're doing, if they're purchasing equipment. Even if you don't need that equipment, you can check with, I mean, you check with your maintenance team to see if they could use it. If not, you can negotiate. Um, a credit or sell it for benefit to the to the district.
Is it fair to say that TCDS as well has the same um? in their contract?
I think from the next agreement, you should negotiate more owner control.
Right, should we do an audit on?
Owner control, or our control.
Should we do an audit on the construction management as well, to have sense for all of these?
I, I. I think, I think.
But I think we definitely need similar controls, because I, I. If this is what happens with, uh, Pro West, it's probably our concern for that as a whole.
But with the hiring of the new people that we're having with the.
The new management, we should put the controls on, and anything.
It's very difficult for me to comprehend and break my head around right now, is that this report, uh, uh, and, and I know there are two different reports, but this report that we got, that was dated December third to twenty twenty-one, come now for the end of the report that we got, that we had twenty twenty-one, we got just a few weeks ago, the, the audit. There was no, you had no feeling of anything like this was happening in there, this is all, so like, wow.
Well, because I think the overriding message is that they came in under the GMP, and so they were saving. And so this is a little closer look at what you spent.
Right, and then we, then we realized, we could have had more sits if we had more controls.
Yes.
So.
I mean, maybe a lot more.
Well, at least a million, what I'm seeing in this.
I mean, I think that, um.
And that's not change.
You know, that's, that's, that's what I think we have to think beyond, it's not just that, you know, what is in that number, and you know, like, we just rolled over contingency dollars from B one, B two into B three, B four, now we're, it's just, that went into the guaranteed max price, I'm assuming.
For the, for the board, this is a good discussion, it'll be uh, your new, uh, our future construction manager, bond manager needs to have a discussion with the board about the delivery methodology, because with the lease, leaseback, our guarantee maximum price, you give up some of those controls, whereas in a design-to-build, maybe you don't, maybe you have a little bit more control, or it could be all of how you initiate your contract.
Well, you could write it into the contract, release these back.
Right, that's, that's what I.
I mean, you could say no lodging, you could say, we won't pay for lodging, you could say that we won't, you know, there it's a very limited car life expense.
But I think some of what we're seeing is also, it's just like the regular reporting, right, like a regular understanding of like where the dollars are going to back up, like, that's just that just hasn't been reached before.
Right.
I'm not sure how far from you two.
Is it true, no one has reached out to the proposal for the RFP?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not shocked, it's like two weeks away.
Because the RFP of that magnitude takes a long time to prepare, so they usually just take the time, and they'll turn it.
Because things continue.
Okay.
So we are going to give direction to move forward with audits on B three, B four, and Alredio, to get a proposal back to us, is that correct, everybody?
Yeah, is it B three, B four?
I think to get better understanding of scope of audit.
Yeah, I think that's a big question.
The scope of the audit?
Yeah.
I think it should reveal the same things this audit.
So it's similar to the B one, B two audit?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'll need to talk to Steven about what that looks like with projects.
I mean, let's, let's look at the proposal, and let's just see what that looks like.
We, we can get, we can give you guys a proposal on, on this, and I think I forgot our pricing, but I think it was like thirty, and if we do two, we can discount it like a volume incentive, and if, like, a ten percent. So, if you, if you guys.
Three thousand, we're good.
I mean, I think.
No.
As long as there's no charges for car expenses or lodging.
Yeah, so we, we can get you guys a quote, and you guys can, if, we can throw our name in the hat, so we're happy to support you guys on this.
Thank you, Mary, for calling.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thanks, David.
David, I'll be talking to you.
The meeting is officially adjourned.
We're done, okay, have a good, have a good night, everyone.